Mayor, we're all set here when you are.
Great, thank you. We'll just let, Scott will trickle in at some point.
And while I have you, I'd like to make a little announcement at the beginning of the next meeting. We're having a little technology issue that I should announce to the public.
Okay, we'll make sure to allow you to do that. But in the meantime, we can go ahead and there's Scott connecting now and have the Mr. City Attorney, please, do you have anything to report out of closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Emeryville City Council and the Mesa Boardman in closed session on the items listed in closed session agenda regarding item 5.1.1, an update was provided and direction was given regarding item 6.1.1, an update was provided and direction was given and item 6.1.2, direction was given and that's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. The time I have is 6:49 and this meeting is adjourned. That will bring us to the special study session. It is still February 16th. The time is 6:50 and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Present.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
I'm here and you know, I apologize I failed to do so. I'm just going to give some introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you'll see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. So I will, next up is approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second for that?
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Medina, a second from Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And next up, we have Expartate Communications. Does anyone have anything to report? Nope.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, can I go ahead and make my little technology announcement?
Please do.
We are having, the company that provides us with our live streaming on our website is having a system-wide failure. It's not only affecting Emeryville. However, the public has many other options for watching. You've just announced that anybody could join the Zoom call that, you know, where the links were published in multiple places. And also, they can watch it on Channel 27, which is our cable local access channel. And you can also stream ETV Channel 27 if you go to the same page where you normally go for Council Agendas. There's a link to go right to ETV and so you can also watch it there on your computer. And in the meantime, their best engineers are on the job, so hopefully that'll be fixed soon. But if not, the people have options.
Very good. Hopefully for folks who are watching at home, you have found a way to do so. And now, if you want to speak to us, that was the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to the, to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hands to make comments.
No comment cards and no raised hands at this time.
Okay, seeing no further comments, this is going to close the public comments section and we will move on to the study session. And this is a study session on SB 1383, Short-Lived Climate Pollutants, Organic Waste and Methane Commission Reductions. This is an implementation update. So I'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, and Public Works Director Houlihan is on as well as Matt Anderson. Not sure who's presenting this item.
I, this is Mary Grace Houlihan, and I am pleased to be here tonight. I'm going to introduce Matt Anderson. He is going to make the presentation and I trust that he will be able to answer questions on it as well. So Matt, take it away.
Thank you, Mary Grace. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Matt Anderson, Environmental Technician and Public Works, here just to give you an update on SB 1383. As mentioned previously, it's a statewide law that was passed in 2016 and it requires a reduction of methane through reduction of organics going to landfills and an increase in edible food recovery. And there's a lot of moving parts to this legislation, so I'm going to give you just really high-level overview, go through a couple of different sections of it, and then I'll leave you some time at the end. Hopefully we can get to any questions then. But as the mayor mentioned, this stems out of a 2016 law that the Short-lived Climate Polluting Plan, which essentially mandated CalRecycle to promulgate some rules for jurisdictions to achieve the targets of the 75% reduction in organics and the 20% increase in edible food recovery by 2025. And so those regulations were not finished until this last November. And when CalRecycle published those, we, as a city, have been working regionally with our JPA Stop Waste and other cities in the region to review and plan for implementation as needed. I should note before we get too far into this, that there is a lot of concern by many cities over the timeframe of implementation and potential cost to jurisdictions for this. So we are working both with Stop Waste Level and NICLO, the Legislative Folks, to work on an extension, potential extension for the requirements of one year. I spoke with them today and there's no legislation introduced as of yet, but the deadline is this Friday and they sounded confident that something was going to be introduced that would potentially be an extension for the implementation requirement. So we can talk about that further, but I just wanted to let you know there is potential for these regulations being kicked down the road a little bit. So, high level, you can see there's a couple of different sections. Basically, it's mandating organics pickup for all businesses and multifamily and residents across the state. There's an edible food recovery component which includes a capacity study. There's one particular item in procurement where jurisdictions are required to procure organic matter and are also required to procure or have certain requirements on the paper products that they procure. There will be an ordinance that will have to be adopted to enforce the provisions of this legislation. And then there's annual outreach that is required to the different organics generators and some pretty strict record-keeping and reporting requirements. And then just kind of a brief timeline there, three important dates are currently, the implementation date is 2022, January 1st, and major enforcement begins 2024, except for one provision which is standardized cart colors across the state and that's not in effect until 2036. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, collections and processing, it's really kind of carte blanche. Everyone has to have organics pickup. There's going to be waivers for certain businesses if they, de minimis waivers, if they generate less than five gallons, I believe it is, of organics in their, in their generation weekly and they're of a certain size. But there's also requirements for route reviews to make sure both, to make sure both businesses are and residents and multifamily developments are obtaining organics pickup collection services and also that there's no contamination or minimized contamination in these services and as well as the standardized bin colors I mentioned. Fortunately, we've recently amended our contract with Waste Management and a lot of these requirements and some of the future ones we'll talk about are, or have been included in that. Of note, we have one FTE that will be dedicated full-time to 1383 implementation from Waste Management. That's in addition to the half-time person that's already working on outreach with us for different aspects of Legislative Implementation. So there's a pretty in-depth color scheme here with red and green, but a few issues of note. There will be, or contamination, cart contamination has rolled out recently in Emeryville. Hopefully you've all gotten note of that. You should have received an update about a month ago from our department. And so recycling and organics are beginning to be reviewed for major contamination or contaminants at this point. One issue, just looking forward, is that the waste stream will also have to be reviewed for major contaminants and that is something we're working on regionally because it's unclear what that means from CalRecycle. I just wanted to point that out as a potential item. The cart color change is another one to approach for the city. There are a couple of different options there. It can be done all in one move. It can be done over time as carts are switched out and that doesn't have to be implemented until 2036. So we'll be coming back to council closer to November or December with several other updates and likely in ordinance. And so we can provide an update there, but that will be an item of cost at that point. And then the other item I mentioned was just tracking, there is a reporting requirement for essentially the entirety of the actions under this legislation that need to be reported both annually and then available to CalRecycle within 10 days of request. So everything I say from here on has to be recorded and reported. Next slide, please. Another large section of this legislation is edible food recovery. Stop Waste, our Regional JPA is generally taking the lead on this. They're going to be performing a capacity study to ensure that there is regional capacity and will be developing MOUs with the Alameda County Environmental Health and they'll be, along with Stop Waste and Waste Management, will be doing outreach and record-keeping for that. So I, minimal requirements for the city on this one. But of note, there will also need to be, all items need to be tracked for these activities. So, next slide, please. So procurement for the jurisdiction, this is one of the big ones. There's two sections to the procurement. There's paper products, which all paper products are now going to have to be 30% post-consumer recycled paper as well as bean recyclable that the city purchases after 2022. And then there's an annual organics procurement which you should have received in attachment that discuss that in more detail. For the paper products procurement, we have an administrative instruction that's existing, Blaisdell, so it's going to take a little more implementation and some staff time, but we're generally on a good track with that one. The procurement's requirement, there are a lot of issues with this, not for the, just for the City of Emeryville, but regionally and statewide. I think it was mentioned in that sheet that was handed out, but there isn't actually sufficient material to achieve this procurement requirement statewide. So CalRecycle is essentially imposing a requirement that's impossible to achieve, which poses some problems, as you can imagine. But the short of the organics procurement is that we need to procure 0.08 tons per person of organic material per year. And that works out to approximately 973 tons of organic material for Emeryville yearly. And there were a couple of rough numbers in that sheet that you should have received, but it, it can, yeah, it can vary in what the cost might be, but it could cost anywhere between 50 to $150,000, but there's a lot of unknowns there. Could potentially be less, could potentially be more. Some things that we're doing are ready to achieve this. We have a annual compost giveaway that we do at Big Daddy's Garden and it's not a significant portion, but that's, I think that's how we're approaching the requirements at this point is piecemeal. So that's 30 tons off the top there. And we're looking to work with Stop Waste as well as regional partners, so the East Bay Regional Park System, potentially looking a little further out for folks who are carbon farming or other potential large-scale uses of compost or mulch there. There are other ways to achieve this as well. They made sure to clarify in the requirements that procurement does not necessarily mean purchasing. So there are requirements called the Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance, set down by the state for new developments essentially. And we can increase those requirements to also achieve a little bit of the overall, overall 973 tons that are mandated. And those are just a few items, which is a long way of saying, we've started approaching the problem, but there's a long way to go still and we're working on it regionally. Next slide, please. So there's also going to need to be an ordinance and enforcement of all of these requirements and that's going to be, Stop Waste is going to be taking the lead. They'll be developing that by September of this year and then they'll be bringing that ordinance to the city for adoption by November or December of this year. So that's when we'll be coming back to you all. And for inspection and compliance, that, they're working, as I mentioned earlier, developing an MOU with Alameda County Health Department and they're going to be inspecting and working on compliance for all the high organics food generators, tier one and tier two, identify different types of organics generators. And again, a large issue here is I think it's just going to be the tracking of all the different data sets. So, next slide, please. Education and outreach, the annual education is required and annual edible food recovery as well to those large organics generators. This is all covered under the one FTE we have with Waste Management. So it's a requirement, but we should be good to go for those. Next slide, please. And then also we have, as I mentioned, record-keeping and reporting, annual reports for all of the implementation of these requirements. And then if they request, we have 10 days to produce an implementation record is their term for it. And issues are going to stem from the multiple entities that are implementing this, from, they're going to be, or we're going to need to be tracking everything from the receipts of paper purchases to the Alameda County Environmental Health inspections to Waste Management flyers that were sent out or contaminants that were recorded. There's just going to be a lot of different data that are needing to be recorded in one place. So Stop Waste is exploring a potential solution to that in regional cloud-based software that can integrate a lot of these different entities reporting requirements into one location. Next slide, please. So I think that's a high level of all of the different requirements of it. Really, the largest one locally, I think, is going to be the organics procurement. There hasn't, both for us and for any other city I've spoken with at this point, there haven't identified a way to fully achieve these organics procurement requirements, especially for cities that are built out. There just isn't sufficient space to put down this organic material. Also, the centralized data management, as I said before, Stop Waste is procuring that on a regional level, but, or pursuing that on a regional level, but we may, depending on our implementation timeline, may need to pursue that more quickly. And we're working with Waste Management and other partners to see where our options are there. And then last but not least, I think I mentioned in the beginning, but there is potentially reviewing of the waste stream for contaminants and I think that's a little further down the road, but there's, that's one of the other items that in our planning sessions, we haven't developed a good answer for at this point. So I think that's a good overview at this point. Next slide, please. There's some links for more information and I'm happy to answer any questions that the councilmembers may have.
Great, thank you. Well done, Matt. I will look to my colleagues to see if there are any clarifying questions before I check for public comments. And Vice Mayor Donahue, go ahead.
Matt, could you estimate the number of cubic feet of that much organic waste?
I could. Are you talking about mulch or compost?
Say compost.
1,410 cubic yards. Thank you for asking.
Use your phone.
Uh, no, but I did, sorry.
So we would be, our city would be rising above the bay at a certain rate.
If we did that all in compost. Any other questions? Okay, at this point, I will check in with the city clerk to see if anyone has submitted any online comments.
No, we have none at this time and no raised hands.
Okay, so I will close the portion of public comment for this item. And you're right, Scott, there are a lot of issues that we need to think about in terms of the implications to the city. There will be budget implications. There will be policy implications, as Matt noted. We're going to have an ordinance that we'll need to look at. That's currently being developed for, for, to work for the county at the Stop Waste level. And then there's going to be a lot of staff time. So I think the one thing we should come away from this with is that an appreciation for the fact that our Public Works Department and our Finance Department and our, you know, many departments will be embroiled in what the implications of this very heavy lift is going to be. And I just wanted to give, for folks who are watching at home, just a little, a really broad overview of why this legislation was put into place. It's mainly to get methane out of our landfills. Methane is a really dangerous, short-lived climate pollutant. It's one of our greenhouse gases and while it is short-lived, it traps a lot more heat than other greenhouse gases, namely carbon dioxide. So it's extremely harmful and one of the main sources of it is organics in our landfills. So it was low-hanging fruit for the state. However, it, this process has seemed to be very convoluted and I'm hopeful that we'll have some sort of news by Friday as to whether implementation can be delayed through a legislative route. And would love to get, check in with my colleagues and see if you have any feedback or questions or more discussion on this. Member Medina?
I was fortunate enough to receive a preview of this discussion in our last Sustainability Committee meeting, so I've been thinking about the regulatory for like a week, actually. And, you know, I think I cannot overstate how concerned I am about the data management part of it and how much staff time that could consume in addition to the organics procurement. So I wholeheartedly support Stop Waste being our leader and stepping up for maybe a regional subscription to Recyclist or working out some sort of deal with Stop Waste so we can use that cloud management software. Because I can share with you what Matt told me last week, the current method of sending information is people email each other, Excel files, fill them out, download them, and then email them back. They do not use Google Sheets or any sort of database system. So that seems like a massive waste of time and the organics acquisition, I think, would clearly be a lower cost for us if we can lump in with a regional body. So can't wait for your work on Stop Waste, Diane.
Thank you. Yes, it's, it's by sheer weight and volume, the amount of compost and/or mulch that we would need to accept as a city is significant. So we're hoping to find other outlets for these materials and ways to share in those costs and share in the use of those materials where they might, might be helpful for carbon farming or for agricultural uses. So I want to recognize Member Bowers. I see you with your hand up.
Thanks. I have a question for, for Matt. Just, does, how does this rules development interplay, if it does it all, with the development in the Bay Area of the Air District's Rule 13-2 on organic handling and recovery of organic materials? We put that rule development on hold this past year. It's designed to capture volatile, volatiles, methane release, things like that at organic, during the organic recovery process. And I'm just wondering how the state law and implementing 1383 like really interacts with, with rural development, if you're familiar?
Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the Air District's 13-2. There is a section in the 1383, a fairly large section, about organics facilities, processing facilities. So I, I hope that they have had some sort of coordination, but I can look into that further if councilmember like.
I, I would actually, yeah. I'd just be curious. I'm not the expert, Diane, or Mayor is on this issue for sure. But I sit on the Air District Board and most of our, I chair the Stationary Source Committee. Most of the rule development that we do is related to refineries and other stationary sources, but we, we do have, we've tabled on and off, we get a lot of mixed feedback from Stop Waste included, folks about the rule development around 13-2. And I just fully don't, I think, comprehend what the interplay is between us needing to develop this rule, which is also state-mandated, right? State legislation telling us to do this rule on the recovery of methane and volatiles through organic materials and then how that interplays with 1383. So maybe they work together and I just don't understand that, but I'd be grateful for anything staff or our mayor have that could help me understand how these, these relate.
Yeah, I look forward to getting clarification on that as well. And I wonder if it might have to do with what they call in the, the report that we got renewable natural gas and, and the way that that's produced. And that is one of the routes by which we get through that procurement requirement. However, unfortunately, what I found out in my research is that that does not include the natural gas that's already being used to power all of the whole fleet of waste management trucks that come through our city. That is a different kind of natural gas. This needs to come specifically from the waste that's diverted out of our trash. So I wonder if it might have something to do with that, Member Bowers. It may. Member Donahue?
I, you know, traditionally, a lot of landfills produced lots of methane because they didn't do this, but they had a method like at the Berkeley Marina and the north of the Marina has an underground collection of methane and they burn it off and turn it into CO2. Is that part of what is currently being done at Waste Management and does Stop Waste approve of that or is that a part of the equation?
Stop Waste is silent on what our, our individual contracts with our individual haulers require. So this state law, SB 1383, I think they have very specific rules as to how, you know, what cities and municipalities can use to offset what they're required to do. And yeah, honestly, I'm not sure, Scott. But I appreciate this, this. But I appreciate this, this presentation from staff. I think it's good for us all to be aware what our staff is contending with and what, how Matt's going to be spending his time for the next year. Member Medina, I apologize.
One question that just occurred to me, based on something I saw in the Netherlands, too. Has anyone thrown out making compost islands? They definitely did little playgrounds that are like hexagons if we have too much mulch and not enough rip rap, so to speak.
Where would this go?
Wind water. Yeah, we can just, yeah, we could be like 1.5 square miles, no problem.
Flotilla is of organic marshland. I love it.
That's the word I wanted. Guys, I just throw it out there for public risk consider and like let me know whether or not this is feasible for us to just create a chain of islands like around the marina.
Compost Islands.
I'm gonna vote no, I'm gonna vote no right now.
I think BCDC might have something to say about that. But at this stage, I want to thank staff for this overview. I'm sure this topic will be coming back regularly as we have more decisions to make. And I'm very glad to see that carts don't have to be completely turned over until 2036 because those are not the colors of carts that we have in our city currently. So I appreciate the leeway on that, and we'll, we will find a best practice for that. So unless there's any more question or discussion, I remember Bouters, go ahead.
Just since they have to turn over the carts, like, do they recycle the carts? Like, what is that? What's, because that's waste itself. I just, I really am curious, like, that's a ton of waste, like, heavy plastic. Like, I'm just really interested, like, that, that to me seemed like a, a thing that shouldn't be a thing, but it is, I guess. So I'm just curious, like, if you know what they're going to do with all the carts.
Um, there, I, I don't believe that there's a plan yet, but if, if we were to take those carts today and turn them in to Waste Management, we would check on the bottom and see what they're made of. And currently, we are recycling, and this is a different recycling market than we've had in years previous, I just want to say. But currently, under really difficult, very strict guidelines for recycling, we are recycling plastics one, two, and five. So three, I think three, four, five, six, six and seven are getting landfilled. So it depends on what they're made of. And I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't looked at recycling symbol on the bottom of them. But they, sensibly, they could be if they're one of those high-value plastics. And, and recycling markets do change year to year. They're much stricter now because we have taken a stand on stopping sending recyclable bales to other countries and then finding out that they are being landfilled either there or they're being incinerated, which is not our goal as people who, who want to do right by the planet. So it's, it's, it's a tough recycling market right now. And part of what's happening at the state level is trying to develop those markets locally. And, and, you know, ostensibly, 1383 is going to help develop a market for all of these organics that we're going to be putting out there that don't exist yet. So it's complicated.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mary Grace, for the informative presentation.
Mayor Martinez, I don't know if Matt had one final thing to say. His hand was raised, but now I see he's lowered it. So Matt, did you have?
Oh, sure. May I respond to the council member's question briefly?
Please do.
I just wanted to let you know that we actually are pursuing this with Waste Management. One of the options that we'll be bringing to council is potentially replacing all of the carts with a dark gray color that's a higher recycled content, and then just having the lids be different colors. And so we're getting a series of different options from Waste Management and what the cost will be. And then we'll be bringing that back to council when it's available.
Thank you for that.
Very good. We'll get that sometime before 2036. And get back to us on compost islands.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. All right, it is 7:23, and I'll adjourn this study session. And Sheri, just let me know when we're ready to roll on the next agenda.
Okay, ready. Thank you.
All right, it is 7:23 PM, and this is the Successor Agency regular meeting. It is still February 16th. And please bear with me while I read this introduction. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as the e-notification on social media. At this time, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. And now I will be looking for a motion on approval of the final agenda.
So rules, second?
I have a motion from Member Pats, a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And are there any expertise communications to report? Okay, seeing none. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, please press star nine. And I will now check with the city clerk to see if anyone has submitted their comments or if there are any hands raised.
No speaker cards and no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comment, we will close public comment and move to the consent calendar. And I will just check in with my colleagues to see if there are any questions or discussion desired. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Bouters, a second for Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And we have no action items, so I will adjourn this meeting at 7:27. And Sheri, just let me know when you're ready to go with the main meeting.
Okay, ready.
All right, I have the time at 7:27, and I'm calling to order the City Council regular meeting of February 16th, 2021. Sheri, since I just read the major announcement, do I need to do that again, or am I good?
No, I think we're good on that and the roll call.
Very good. So I will take it to approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
Yes, motion.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Pats, a second for Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That takes us to special orders of the day, of which there are none. And I'll ask the city clerk for item five, if there are any announcement of commission and committee vacancies.
Yes, there are. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The public notice for vacancies has been published. We have one business representative for the Budget Advisory Committee. We have, we noticed two residents on the Commission on Aging, but since the time of our notice, we've had another resignation. So there are three vacancies on Commission on Aging with varying expiring terms. And we have two vacancies on the planning commission. So applications for all of these seats are due by Monday, March 15th, and the appointments are scheduled to be made at the City Council meeting immediately following that date on March 16th. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I will check in with the city manager to see if there is a city manager's report this evening.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Colleagues, are there any expertise communications to report?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, you skipped council member announcement.
I, my apologies. Item number six, council member special announcements or reports on meetings attended. I, nope. Member Pats?
You know, I attended the Housing Committee meeting, as always, there's nothing significant to report out. But I feel like I made the effort to turn on the Zoom. I should report that I did that.
I think many of us have gone to, to meetings that don't necessarily warrant a report, and that is absolutely fine.
The Gilman JPA always merits a report, though. She's, she remembers now.
I just, I just, I erased that from my memory. Okay, so what happened? You wanted to report on the Gilman JPA. Yeah, yeah. So there, there's a lot of discussion over super laterals, per usual. There's, again, they showed the spreadsheet that names and shames Emeryville for not contributing more money than our annual allotment. They always pull that up. I always just like stone face it. And then they said, you know, right now Berkeley is paying for the maintenance itself. It's like using its own contractor in-house to do it. But, you know, in the future, they're going to come back to other cities. And then they asked if there was any discussion or comment, and I just did not say anything and stared into the camera deeply. Some lipstick was given to proportionality. And that, that was basically it. It was kind of like a nothing meeting. Nothing happened. Some parents said, yeah, we want to use the field. But right now, it costs more to keep the lights on than to rent it out at the child's fees, apparently. So the kids can only come during the day, and they're refusing to budge for that decision. I say let the kids play. That's how I voted last time because I'm not paying the electricity bill. It doesn't really need it right now, you know?
Thank you, Member Medina, for that service. I, I think for, for children's mental health, getting out there and kicking their legs around is, is more important than ever.
I've been an advocate for it as much as I can.
It's the best reachable appointment decision we've ever made.
My ability to give a really glaring face for like two hours is my best contribution to this council.
Thank you for your service.
Sorry.
I will now open up public comment. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or the, or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comments or raised their hands, and I'm not seeing any raised hands.
No, no online comment cards and no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. So I will go ahead and close public comment in that case, which takes us to the consent agenda. And I will just check in with my colleagues to see if there's anything they would like to pull or discuss. And if not, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, there was, there is a, oh, there was a hand up, but it's up again.
I will go ahead and recognize the speaker. So Sheri, when you're ready, please go ahead and unmute the speaker, and you will have three minutes.
Hey, everyone. Sorry, I raised my hand right at the end there. This is Alex April, and I'm just Senior Government Manager at Spin, the scooter company owned by Ford Motor Company. And I just wanted to call in and say thank you to city staff and all of you for all of your work with the scooter program. We're really looking forward to the program starting next month, and we'll be in touch with a few of you. I know parking infrastructure was brought up as an issue previously, and so we are looking to try to bring some charging stations, infrastructure free for the city with advertisements and with other solutions as well, so that there isn't the lack of bike racks and that with the scooter program, we're able to really create that first mile, last mile solution. So just want to say thank you.
Great, thank you, Alex. And with that, I will now close public comment, and I will entertain a motion in a second for consent agenda.
Move consent.
Second.
A second.
A motion for Member Medina, a second for Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And we have no public hearings this evening, and we have no action items. And I will check in to see if we have any department head reports.
We have none tonight. Madam Mayor, we will have at the next meeting.
Thank you. And then future agenda item requests from the city council members. I will open this up to my colleagues if anyone has anything. And if not, I have one myself. I just wanted to bring a future item for a right to recall to work ordinance. These are, these, such ordinances have been passed in other cities as Oakland and Glendale, California, which pertain to the right to workers who were laid off or furloughed during a pandemic to come back in order of seniority to their jobs. This would mostly affect people in hospitality. And I would like to bring this back as soon as feasible with staff. And I hope that my colleagues will agree that this is a timely thing to do. I've already caucused with Member Bouters, who agrees with me that this is a good time to bring this forward. And we, we would like to, to consider this issue. So I see thumbs up from Scott, a thumbs up from Member Bouters, unanimous. Okay, and I, with that, Member Bouters and I will coordinate with staff on draft language and on timing, so we can get this back in a timely manner with not too much burden on staff. Does anyone else have an item that they'd like to bring forward? No? All right. Well, I guess that 1383 didn't take as long as we expected just because we have so much trust in our, our staff to, to carry this torch. So thank you, everyone. The time is 7:36, and I will call this meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.